We'll enter back into open session, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we need to approve the minutes from our previous two meetings. Could I have a motion to approve those meetings?
I'll make that motion.
A second, please.
Second.
Second. Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
At this time, we have a time on our agenda for city council. So who wants to go? Is it a tag team? Okay.
Good evening, school board. Happy New Year. Looking forward to many great things coming your way in 2022. So happy to be here. Mr. Lauer, Councilman Lauer, is going to be joining me. In case I can't be here, he will be our alternate liaison. So I just want to introduce him and welcome him to the team here. I do have two things real quick. City council last night announced a citywide initiative that encourages all residents, businesses, and our schools to show their support for our hometown team, the Bengals. We have unofficially declared Sunday as Bengals Day in the city of Hamilton. By wearing your Bengals gear, your black and orange colors, or putting orange lights on your home, like I did, or your business, you are doing your part to help bring home a victory on Sunday evening. So we would love to see the schools
Great idea.
wear the black and orange on Friday and throughout the weekend if possible. Secondly, as all of you know, we have been pursuing to get not one but potentially two Amtrak stops in the city of Hamilton. This is a project we've been working on for close to a year now. Last night at city council, our engineering director presented platform plans and potential locations for both. We are progressing in the right direction on this, and now is the time to get the attention of our state leaders and our governor to get this project officially in motion. They will need to officially approve Amtrak's expansion plans for our stops to become a reality. I would love to get our schools involved with this effort, specifically our students. Mr. President and school board members, I'd love to see our students write letters to our state leadership supporting our efforts to get Amtrak stops in Hamilton. Our state representative, our state senator, and our governor need to hear from our young residents. To me, these aren't just letters. These are testimonies from the hearts and minds of our young people, the future generation. This is the group who will be the beneficiaries of the groundwork and the foundations that we, the current elected leaders of Hamilton, build for them. This is a great opportunity for the students to get involved with current city issues that will affect their future and to be a part of the lobbying effort to get the stops in our city. This will also make the students study and learn about this issue and be directly involved with its outcome. This is a great way to get our youth on board with this important endeavor to get their voices heard. Would greatly appreciate your collaboration on this monumental effort and our continued partnership to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. So it's not just a train station. It is a gateway into our city and a start to a huge future for our town. So how can we get started? Guess you can just call me in the morning if you want.
Okay, I'm sure we have, well, we have some principals here.
Okay.
So maybe they can pass it on and.
I think, Mr. Sprague, I think one of the ways that we can do that is that fits right into a lot of the things that we do in our government curriculum and we do with city governments and things of that nature.
That sounds great.
If we focus that maybe with, you know, some of the government teachers at the high school, I think that's a good start with.
Okay, you can send me an email. I'll have the information and all that, provide that to the students, get them started. This is a volunteer opportunity for them. Those who participate might be a little pizza party that the mayor will sponsor.
Since he's not here, since he's not here, we won't tell Pat at all.
Okay, yeah, who would?
Michael, very, both of these are exciting for our city, and I appreciate the effort the city council is putting in on both these endeavors to put in some, uh, some spirit for the Bengals. And also, Amtrak stopping here, that'd be a great coup for the city, so.
Great, thank you.
Michael, you can tell Mayor Moller that I could probably get him a deal on them pizzas.
I like that. I like that. Councilman Lauer, you want to say something briefly? Thank you.
I just want to say, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Joel Lauer. This is my first attempt at city council, and I'm very proud of it. And I'm especially very proud of the fact, as a teacher in Hamilton City Schools, I really want to make sure that we continue to build a bridge between city council and our school, and our school, school board. I've already begun to work with Chris Cannell. I've begun to work with some others. I want to get Reverend Shack onboard. Was, I want to get involved. I don't want to get on, I don't want you to get onboard. I want to get involved. I think this is a great opportunity for us to convey, this is a whole message that we're together on the city and in our schools. And I think that we've made some great progress over the last few years. We're heading in the right direction. Chris and I are working hard on some, I'm working with Chris on some things, and it's been a pleasure. And I'm very honored and I'm very thankful to be here with you guys.
Joel, congratulations.
Congratulations, Joel. Best of luck.
Yeah, we look forward to continuing down that path, working together. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming in. Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, next on the agenda, we have a number of first reads for board agenda, board policy. There is no vote taken on that tonight. This is just a first read. A final vote will be taken in February. So those are just for your information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a resolution with the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy to join them again this year. We joined them last year about February. Mr. Holbrook and I talked about that this year. We were waiting on the lawsuit to actually be filed because it is $2 a student, so it's just short of $19,000 a year to join. And we felt that what we gave last year was enough for them to get started, and that's what we communicated to them. They have since gone ahead and got the lawsuit filed early in January, and will be moving forward with that. I'm sure it's going to take a couple of years to go through that process. And ultimately, it's something I anticipate is going to end up in the Ohio Supreme Court, as it did the last time. They had that type of lawsuit. So we would recommend that the district join for FY '22.
So I have a motion to join with the Coalition for Equity and Adequacy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, sir.
I'll second.
Second by Pastor Shack. And Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
And going on to the tip.
Tax increment financing, Rossville Flats. We've been working with the city, and they've got an initial agreement over there right now. But there's a way to improve upon that, and that's by putting a wraparound TIF on that that would basically sit right beside it. And what will happen is for the first 23 years, that it's going to be TIF. And we do this instead of them ending up going 30 years. So in the final seven years is where, you know, the dollars really come into the school district. And some of them will also go to Butler Tech, but you know, the larger share comes to the district at that point. And it's much more to your financial benefit over the entire term to do it in this manner as opposed to doing it in the way that it initially went through, which is, they were simply doing what they were permitted to do by law. This is working with our district and providing a way for the district to see some benefit down the road.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this TIF and revenue sharing agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Baker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davidson. Mr. Hancock.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Blevins at this time, and the fact that we have three elementary school presentations that I'm sure you're going to find exciting. We've got a lot of really neat things going on. And this will, this will start in our series of building updates over the last, over the next several months. So I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Blevins.
So I'm very excited tonight to have three of our buildings here to highlight some of the amazing initiatives. The first building that we're going to highlight tonight is Bridgeport Elementary. Our two administrators here this evening are Mrs. Vicki Colwell, the principal at Bridgeport, and Mrs. Stephanie Oaks, the assistant principal. So I'll turn it over to them.
And before they start their presentation, I want to bring the note, I've been waiting for this. Mrs. Colwell's been in this district for a really long period of time and submitted her retirement paperwork back in August. And I want to just personally congratulate you, Vicki, on the successes and leadership that you've had, and thank you for the service to this district. And I'm sure the board feels the same way. But you've been a huge asset to not only me personally, but the district and the community. But so thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity. Beginning our presentation, we'll start with a wonderful quote. Bridgeport's mission statement and school-wide belief system is reflected in this quote. Our mission statement is together developing successful leaders and learners in an inclusive environment. Where have we been? Well, there is no one size fits all for our staff or students. We have the tools to meet a variety of needs for our staff and students academically and behaviorally. We worked hard to implement these research-based programs to put tools in our teachers' hands, but we needed something to pull them all together so that our arrows weren't going in so many different directions. All the tools were effective for individual classroom needs and ultimately allow us to get where we need to be, but we still had to align them. We had, we had the tools, but we needed a toolbox to put them in, an umbrella-type framework. From a school-wide PBIS focus, our Bob Catway matrix and the Leader in Me has continued to be at the forefront of our Tier One instructional platform for behavior and social skills. Through this lens, we have celebrated many successes such as closing academic gaps and social skill gaps for many of our students. We have built staff and student leadership through the Leader in Me seven habits. Teaching student leadership through grade-level service projects, student-led quarterly award assemblies, and student-led Bridgeport family showcases. Examples of community involvement by our Bridgeport council include Operation Pumpkin and Fit and Center Family Days. We are proud to be awarded the Bronze Award for our positive behavior interventions and supports. This was our first big alignment piece, tying our resources together. Our exemplary practices for PBIS couldn't have come at a more better time than given what our students have been through during the last two COVID years. Last year's 2021 grand totals of referrals that resulted in suspension versus the 1819 school year, which was our last full year we were in school, I say BC before COVID. We were significantly reduced due to our staff knowledge of multiple strategies to meet the needs of the students. This reduction in suspension led to an increase in instructional time for individual students. During the 1819 school year, 322 days of instruction was lost due to suspensions. Compared to the 21 school year of 81.5 days. Based on this analysis of discipline data, 240.5 days were gained back in the classroom due to that reduction. We want to highlight that students are in school and making academic gains.
So where are we now? We now have the toolbox that was referenced before, and that is the multi-tiered systems of support, which we call MTSS. And we're continuing, continuing to focus on that for a better staff understanding. All of the interventions that you saw before, all of the programming, it's now all going in one direction. So you can see our arrows are now aligned, and we're moving toward that one common goal of meeting the needs of the whole child. We found that in order to implement our systems with fidelity, we really needed to slow down in order to speed up, to get the best outcomes possible for our students. Vicki and I have a strong belief in this umbrella and meeting the needs of the whole child, those social skills, those behavioral skills, and those academic skills. And the tools that we have at Bridgeport and that have been used in the past are the means to meet those needs. We're building a better understanding that the meeting the needs of the whole child, both social, emotional, and behavioral skills must be explicitly taught to all students in addition to that academic piece in order to see the overall success. So this year, we're really taking a different approach. We're teaching behavior, social skills, and academics by teaching all students the content, the strategies, the expectations first, and that's that Tier One approach, and then we're going back and we're intervening with additional support for the students that show higher needs. This is really a significant mindset shift for our teachers because it's a different approach that's been used in the past. Instead of just being reactive and using the response to intervention model, we're really being proactive by focusing on MTSS. So in regards to academics, that change in mindset is huge. We're focusing on that Tier One instruction in our teacher-based teams and in our building leadership team by looking at an entire grade level, focusing on a single academic content standard, and then identifying a common strategy that we can use to teach all of our students that grade level standard. We're really getting back to the basics of high-quality teaching while not letting go of that Tier Two and Tier Three piece. A recent example is in our builder, building leadership team meeting. We started having deeper conversations about moving from just teaching in small groups to explicitly, how are we going to do that teaching? So we were able to introduce Marzano's High Yield Instructional Strategies and really find what's going to work for our students in order to make the most growth. So we're excited to share some numbers with you based on our preliminary winter MAP data that is still an open window right now. So our kids are still taking this, but we do have some classes that have wrapped up. And our first one we want to highlight is Mr. Ballsbaugh. He is a fourth-grade intervention specialist, and during our teacher-based teams, one of the subgroups that we're focusing on is students with disabilities. And he was able to grow 87% of his caseload to get them to meet their academic MAP growth goals. The other one that we want to highlight is Mrs. Brandenburg and Mrs. Strafford. They are a kindergarten co-taught classroom, and they were able to get 96% of their students to reach their reading goal in MAP.
So upon returning to in-person instruction this year, our PBIS team found a significant increase in office referrals. Our first action step was to refer back to our PBIS core practices. Core practices include defining school-wide expectations, teaching and practicing behaviors proactively, monitor and acknowledging behaviors we want to see, responding with instruction to unwanted behaviors, and making decisions based on data. Using our school quality improvement grant funds, we hosted a PBIS action team retreat. Our action team is made up of 45% new staff, and we know that to be effective, the core practices need to be in place. The retreat was used to redefine the roles of the action team members and teach our core practices to our new teammates. In addition, the team planned a school-wide PBIS reboot in January. The outcomes from our retreat and reboot planning include fidelity to the school-wide Bob Catway framework to include buy-in from staff and students. For student and staff accountability, we will analyze and continue to analyze discipline data and monthly grade-level meetings to identify areas of focus. In working continually to provide supportive and teachable moments to decrease problem behaviors, Bridgeport has created a space where a student who has demonstrated an unwanted behavior can go to reset, refocus instead of discipline first. We have a threshold, but we're hoping to reduce our discipline referrals by this reset, refocus. And during this time, the student processes through the problem behavior and learns a skill to replace it. In order to achieve school-wide alignment, the action team members from all grade levels planned PBIS lessons that were taught when we returned in January. They spent a whole week teaching our new framework and using the three posters that we bought and redid and put all over the building for teaching opportunities. Students are motivated by PBIS through the dojo store, where they use their positive dojo points to shop and purchase items. We have been putting time and energy into 21 new staff members for collective advocacy that believe we can all do this together. We have been purposeful in identifying and supporting the needs of our new teachers through regular surveys, new teacher breakfast club, admin classroom chats, and our instructional coaches. Responding to teacher needs has allowed them to do their best work in the classroom, and it has been very impressive, I have to say, especially for our new teachers. It's like they skipped three years going forward. As our teams grow together, we have also recognized the need for deeper team building to cultivate healthy collaboration strategies. When we're having our discussions in our meetings, we often look at the first layer, but we're looking to dig deeper and to, you know, focus on effective conversations, reflections, feedback, and equity of participation. That will be for our new teachers, and they really have stepped up in our participating. So that's why we think that's our next step.
So where are we going? Our plan is to stay the course. Vicki and I have worked side by side to lay a foundation for Bridgeport. Our Bridgeport goals are still our end goal, and we're taking intentional steps to meet those. Our goals include that robust MTSS in order to address the whole child, data-driven decision-making in order to grow our students a minimum of one year in both literacy and math, and then supporting the continuous growth and development of our staff. We'll continue that mindset shift that we talked about and really focus on Tier One instruction for all students in all areas. Thanks to the appropriate resources and supports that are provided by the board and by the district, we're really able to fine-tune our practices in the classroom. For example, the instructional coaches that are in our building, they work side by side with our teachers. They model lessons for our teachers. The high-quality curriculum that we have access to, for example, the Engage New York pilot, which a lot of teachers in our building are using. And then the ability to analyze data right next to our leadership team. So because we found that tweaking PBIS has been successful so far this year, we plan to still focus on accountability, school-wide alignment, and the motivation of students and staff in other areas of the building as well. PBIS has really opened up an avenue for further focus in other areas. In regards to academics, we're really excited that kids are meeting the growth in the midst of a pandemic. But our future goal is going to be for kids to exceed a year's worth of growth so that we can really start closing those achievement gaps. Part of the plan to do that is going to be continued professional development, working on student, uh, goal-setting conferences, and then continuous teacher reflection. With behavior, we want to earn the Silver Award for PBIS and ultimately the Gold Award. Our whole team at large will have a clear understanding of all parts of MTSS. Every single student at all times will get what they need to move forward and to be successful. And staff will have the requisite skills to provide a safe and secure environment for students to focus on their learning. We'll continue to integrate the social, emotional tools that we have and really determine how can we make these useful day-to-day in all of our classrooms for all of our students. Unfortunately, COVID has set us back with our community involvement, but it's a priority to us to get reconnected and really showcase the student leadership at Bridgeport. So we want to share with you what our students and some of our new staff members love about Bridgeport.
I like being a student here because there's very nice teachers here.
I like that Bridgeport has a dojo story.
One of the many reasons that I love working at Bridgeport is because all of the staff are so kind and helpful to each other. It honestly just feels like we're one big family here.
I love working.
I love baseball because my teachers always teach me.
We love working at Bridgeport because.
We have amazing teamwork within the building and within the grade level.
We have visible and approachable administration.
And we have very supportive coaching staff.
I love being a student here because it's a nice place and I have the best teachers ever.
Again. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, 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 wait. No, you've got to be grilled a little bit. So, no, no, no. I think it is a nice place. You guys have created an environment for your kids. And I know from personal experience how difficult that building can be and how diverse the student body is. I think a lot of people forget where it's located, that it is a very diverse student body from pulling from a lot of different neighborhoods, but the, it's a nice place. And it's nice to see the kids feel that way. The growth you guys are talking about is incredible. And also, I know that behavior has been an issue with, with a lot of kids. And this, what you're seeing and keeping, saving 240 and a half days, keeping those kids in school and not being suspended is an incredible stat. I mean, it's just amazing to me. So it looks like you're finding a lot of success with that, and I wish you continued success with that. And Vicki, I just want to say thank you for serving our district so well and all the, all the work you've done over the years. I was going, did you have my son in kindergarten or first grade?
First.
First grade, okay.
And third.
No, he didn't read. I know, I know Mrs. Baker thought he repeated a grade. He did not repeat a grade. No, no, no. But you sent him on his course. But anyway, I just want to thank you for all that you've done for the kids in Hamilton. You've been a great asset to our district, and I know you enjoy retirement as much as I am. So, but thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Mrs. Colwell, I also want to thank you so much. I know that you're very dedicated. Both of my grandchildren go there. Let's see, one's in the fifth grade, so she's been there seven years because of the two years with preschool. Yes, and my grandson's also there. But they have learned a lot. And not just academically, but citizenship and manners. But it is, you know, maybe I'm biased because I'm familiar with the school, but yes, I want to, and I want to thank you and best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Mrs. Colwell, for all that you've done for the district.
And thank you, Mrs. Oaks, because I know you've done a lot over the past couple of years, too.
You've got to wait before you can retire.
Thank you, Mrs. Colwell and Mrs. Oaks. It's just, it's great to see them get to highlight some of the work they do and they work tirelessly. Mrs. Colwell is one of the first ones in the district every day, and I'm almost positive the last one to leave the building. I thank you for your presentation and for all you do, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation tonight is Crawford Woods. We have some administrators and some teachers here. I'll start with the administrators and let the teachers introduced by their superiors. We have the principal, Erin Hopkins, here, as well as the assistant principal, Sue Ernst, who I believe is going to be navigating the computer. So welcome, Mr. Hopkins.
All right, so as Mrs. Blevins said, Mrs. Ernst is in the back, and she will be doing our slideshow, so I didn't want her to go unnoticed. All right, so, good evening, everyone. Hamilton administrative superstars and esteemed board members. Tonight is somewhat of a nostalgic night for me personally. Eleven years ago, Mr. Davidson, you sat on the board that approved me to be the principal at Crawford Woods Elementary School. Today, Mr. Davidson, I stand before you a rounder, grayer, older man, but just as passionate about making Crawford Woods a contender. Eleven years ago, eleven years. That's a long time. Mr. Sprague, 11 years ago, we were colleagues. 11 years ago. Eleven years ago, I would guess Mr. Isgro was out fighting crime.
No, I was retired by then.
Okay. It was worth a shot. Mrs. Matthews, you were probably out spreading the word, or Pastor Shack, as we like to call you. And Mrs. Baker, you were in the banking industry. My reason for pointing this out is that a lot changes in 11 years, and if life has changed over the course of the past 11 years, I can assure you, the changes that we have experienced over the past two years have been unprecedented. So let's take a little travels back in time here, and let me take you back to the 2019-2020 school year. Crawford Woods raised its achievement score more than any other elementary school in Hamilton. We grew our students more than any other year, and we received a C on a state report card, which was the highest grade we had ever received. And we were firing on all cylinders, and then March 2020 happened, and a little thing called COVID happened, and we have been rolling with the punches ever since. As you all know, in March of 2020, all schools across America canceled their classes that were face-to-face. We were reduced to posting work online and creating paper packets. While many packets were delivered and students engaged in work online, many packets went uncollected, and many devices collected dust. We know that 2020-2021 began where 2020-2019-2020 left off. We lived and worked through hybrid learning, social distancing, masks, VLI, and many other less-than-ideal teaching and learning situations, and through it all, we still managed to grow our students. With that said, we know there has been a learning gap created by all of this loss of learning, and in order to continue to roll with the punches, we instituted a co-teaching model in primary classrooms. This brings me to the next part of our presentation. Last year, we had three first-grade teachers that grew their students more in reading than any other first-grade team in our district, and they were in the top three for most growth in math. In other words, these teachers won't just talk the talk, they walk the walk. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lindsay Leighton and Ms. Molly Barnell. They are here to discuss their experiences with co-teaching. Here you go.
Hi, guys. So as Mr. Hopkins just said, my name is Lindsay Leighton. I'm a first-grade teacher at Crawford Woods, and this is my second-year teaching. I graduated from the University of Kentucky in 2020, and I'm currently in grad school at the American College of Education in the Educational Leadership Program.
And my name is Molly Barnell. I'm a first-grade teacher and have been at Crawford Woods for the past seven years. I did my undergraduate at Miami, and I'm currently a graduate student at Miami in the Language and Literacy Program.
So we wanted to begin our presentation tonight with this quote by Emily Carr. "You will have to experiment and try things out for yourself, and you will not be sure of what you are doing. That's all right, you are feeling your way into the thing." This quote describes how we came into co-teaching. We were a bit nervous and unsure, but we wanted to try new things and become the best version of ourselves for our kids. We didn't have a specific guide to follow, but we worked through it and made co-teaching work for us. We knew we would be having to step out of our comfort zones a little bit, but with hard work and determination, we would achieve great things. So now we're going to show you some pictures of our classroom and how we began creating an environment that would promote positive and inclusive learning opportunities for our students.
The first thing that we did was work on combining two full classrooms into one. This was a daunting task, but it led us to make a cohesive community space. These are our reading centers. When students are not working with one of us, they're in small groups at the writing center, wordwork center, computer center, or book center. Working in these centers allows for students to collaborate with peers and practice skills being taught in an engaging way. Last year, students worked on station work at their seats with no shared supplies or interaction. We tried our best to keep it interesting, but the lack of peer interaction decreased student engagement. We are happy to have our centers up and fully running this year.
The first reason co-teaching has been so successful in our classroom is it has allowed us more individualized time with our students. Prior to co-teaching, we would only see students three to four times a week for guided reading, depending on their level. We didn't have the time to see every child every single day during our reading block, let alone two times a day for a skill group in addition to guided reading. Co-teaching has allowed us to work with students much more frequently in small groups and cater to each child's unique learning needs. Having the time for these skill groups have also proven to be beneficial as students are receiving reteach opportunities with skills they may not have mastered, as well as students that are receiving enrichment opportunities through learning second-grade standards, sight words, and word patterns. Students are also receiving more individualized instruction with writing and wordwork as well. We are able to hold writing conferences much more frequently and provide much more constructive feedback than in years past. And then, along with academics, co-teaching has significantly limited behavioral problems in our classroom. When a problem does arise, one teacher can speak with the student one-on-one in the hallway while the other teacher continues to lead instruction in the classroom. This has allowed us to teach from bell to bell each day, and the amount of effective academic engagement is higher now than ever. And then the pictures on this slide just show a typical day in our classroom. As you can see, both small group and one-on-one instruction is occurring.
So why does co-teaching help student growth? With more individualized time for instruction, we are seeing more growth in our students in all subject areas. Guided reading moves much quicker with more information covered. We also get more formative data from constant running records and observations for each student. Then we use that data to plan future instructions. One example of this growth is from our Fontis and Pennell guided reading data. My lowest guided reading group in first grade is typically a level or below A. This is a pre-K level at the beginning of first grade. This year was no different with many of our students landing at this level-A reading level. In previous years, I would work alone to aid these needy students. Last year, this group of kids who started at level A were at a level C in the mid-year. This year, the group of students who started at level A were at level D at the mid-year and about to move to level E. This is nearly two levels above where we were at last year. We can literally see the accelerated data that supports co-teaching in our classroom. These kids are growing at a quicker rate due to the intensity of our interventions, an intensity that is made possible by having two highly qualified teachers and well-trained teachers in one classroom. And these are some of the visuals to go along with these data points. So the first one, you see our sight word chart from our classroom. In August, not a lot of stickers going on for our children, and this, in December, you can see how much growth they have made with sight words. In the orange boxes there, we have our map reading data. Our mean RIT score was 152 in the fall, it was 162 in winter. For fall math, it was 155 and 169 in winter, so we are seeing a lot of growth.
As we already said, co-teaching allows us to target each child's unique needs through small groups. In the past, with only one classroom teacher, it was challenging to create groups that each child would appropriately fit in. We often had to group a small range of students together in guided reading groups. Co-teaching has allowed us to have more guided reading groups, therefore having a wider range of levels to best meet the needs of each individual in our room. And we included a picture of puzzle pieces for this slide because every student in our classroom is, in a way, like a puzzle piece. Even with a wide range of students in our classroom with regards to academics, we are able to meet each child exactly where they are and find the perfect fit for them in our co-talk classroom.
Another positive aspect that we have experienced with co-teaching is a stronger classroom community. Students now have two loving adults at school to talk with, as well as a classroom full of amazing peers. We have great relationships within our room. We work really hard and we push our students, but we get to have more time for fun projects that increase student engagement. These projects help students feel more connected and allow them to have fun at school.
And now we just want to show you some pictures of some of these projects. So this first slide, in the beginning of the year to kick off fall, we learned all about apples. We had the students taste red, green, and yellow apples and vote on their favorite. And then we did a writing piece, doing an informative piece about apples, using our five senses, so the kids enjoyed that. On this next slide, you can see closer to Halloween time, we did a pumpkin exploration. So we took our students outside, carved a pumpkin, and then we went back inside and wrote the steps and did a how-to writing piece on that. The kids loved this because it was a lot of their first times getting to carve a pumpkin, so it was very nice to be able to be a part of that for them. And then on this next slide, moving a little bit later into our school year, around Thanksgiving, we did a taste test with different Thanksgiving foods. Again, this was amazing because a lot of our students hadn't tried all of these foods, so they got to taste everything, we voted on our favorite, and then the students wrote an opinion-writing piece on their favorite and why it was their favorite food. And then these last couple slides are just some pictures from throughout the year. This was around the holidays, we had a pajama day, we got to open gifts with our students around our Christmas tree that we made in our classroom. And then this last slide is just different pictures from in our classroom and from throughout the building over the course of this school year. So we've had a lot of fun with our students while we're teaching them.
So last year, the first-grade team had three general education teachers and two Title I teachers. We have always worked well together to grow our students. This year, we have eight teachers with many years of experience and many different perspectives. Our TBT meetings and common plan time have allowed for us to discuss many different topics. I love being able to get new ideas and thoughts from all of my teammates. Also, after a tough day, it's refreshing to have seven other teachers, amazing teachers to fall back on. And that's our team, and with that, we thank you guys for listening and let us tell you about our experience with co-teaching, and we really like to see the growth that we see every day. We're really lucky to see that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnell and Ms. Leighton. Co-teaching is just one example of our instructional approach to close the learning gap, but these two teachers do such an amazing job with it that they truly deserve this opportunity. On top of the instructional changes we have implemented, we also had to rethink how we do our community events. For our homecoming parade, we kept students after school the day of the parade and provided pizza for dinner. We provided two buses for transportation, although we probably needed three. Our music teacher, Charlene Alfaro, taught the students cheers and songs. Many of our staff members stayed to help with chaperoning students to and from the parade while also participating in the parade. We had teachers, parents, administrators, and teacher aides as part of the Crawford Woods entourage. To say that the Wildcat family showed up for this event would be a vast understatement. Each year, Crawford Woods holds an annual Monster Bash right around Halloween. This event has been held in the gym and consists of carnival games, a costume contest, DJ, and food. It is one of our big events. COVID protocols kept us from holding the event indoors, and we needed an event that we could keep everyone safe. Our staff and parents came together to develop our first Fall Fest. Our Fall Fest took place outside. We set up the carnival games that we could, handed out books, highlighted Hispanic Heritage Month, had arts and crafts activities along with pumpkin decorating. The amount of staff that helped out with this event was truly inspiring. From the planning, which required meeting for days after school, to the seeking out of donations and volunteers, to the setup to the execution of the event, it was a true team effort that not only included Crawford Woods staff, but also parents. All of us striving to carve something normal out of times that are anything but. Again, in an attempt to create an event to engage families and do things a little out of the box, our parental involvement committee developed our Touch a Truck event. I will be the first to admit that I was a little skeptical about the event when it was first presented. The goal of the event was to provide students with a cool way to learn about future jobs they may want to pursue. We brought in various work trucks and vehicles from the National Guard, Hamilton Police Department, Hamilton Fire Department, and Rumpke. We also had a semi-truck, a snowplow, and a hearse. Each vehicle was accompanied by the driver of the vehicle. Students were able to interact with the vehicles and the drivers of the vehicles. Students were able to learn how the vehicles assisted the drivers to do their jobs. Again, we had a multitude of staff that secured the vehicles, planned and set up the event, executed the event, and took it apart. None of these things would be possible without the staff volunteering to support the event. Unfortunately, the third event that we were going to hold was our book Bingo, and it's exactly what it sounds like. We play games of bingo, and the winners get books. We play, and so we usually also have pizza or some food to eat while we play the games. We will be looking for creative ways to pull this event together, and I have the utmost confidence that we will be successful. So at this time, Mrs. Ernst is going to flip through a few more slides while I wrap this speech up. So in conclusion, I wanted to use our time tonight to showcase my staff and all the amazing things I get to see them do every day. We continue to grow students, even though conditions are not ideal, not ideal for any of us. We know that you are all here to support us. We know there have been a lot of difficult decisions that you have had to make, but you always made decisions that would lead to more days in school rather than out. We want you to know that we appreciate your supports and your efforts to keep everyone safe and keep our doors open when it is safe to do so. And while there is constant changes occurring all around us, the one thing that will never change is the level of passion, commitment, and dedication that Crawford Woods staff brings to their job every day. Thank you for allowing me to come up tonight and share a little bit about what we do each day at Crawford Woods. It's been a pleasure.
Wow. Thanks, Erin. Knowing you as many years as I have, having seen you continue to grow and develop so much enthusiasm and excitement for your staff and for your students is incredible to me. I just love what you're doing over there.
Thanks.
You're doing a great job. I also want to thank you two young ladies for coming in and talking to us, because you're the first two that has come and told us exactly what's going on, and I love coming from your perspective. It obviously is playing to your strengths, it's meeting the kids where they are and growing the kids, which is what we were hoping for from the very beginning of all this. We know, because we know how detrimental COVID was to that process, and we sort of liked the kid, we never thought, kid with Andrea over there about the, we never thought we'd get to this point, and this is wonderful. And to show how you're working with these kids on a day-to-day basis, giving them the love that they need, and I know your constituency, I was way back when over at Van Buren, I know what these kids, those kids need this, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for providing a warm environment for your kids over there. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Erin, eight years ago, a little over a year ago, you and I met for the first time, and you're still finding your way. You've more than found your way. You have become a really great leader up there at Crawford Woods. It's its own little world up there, and I will agree with Lauren on that, and it's even changed even more in the years since Van Buren.
I know.
Excellent job being done up there by you, your staff, everyone involved, and when Ms. Blevins brought this to us, this co-teaching thing, she and Mr. Baker think, is this really? And yes, yes, okay. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Erin, I can remember 11 years ago, remember Mike Farmer calling me after the meeting and said, what a great hire. He said, he'll be there for the long term. And you have been, you've been there 11 years. He said, he will grow that building, and he'll dedicate himself to that building, and you have, and I appreciate it. You make me look good.
It was all your idea, right?
It was. As far as the team teaching, I can recall last year when Mr. Holbrook and Mrs. Blevins brought it to us and how excited they were, you know, because we knew the students were going to be behind. It was a given, and they had their vision of how to meet the needs and try to grow the children, and it's worked out. There's a lot of studies over the last probably two or three months, actually, the last two or three weeks nationwide about how far behind students are, and the growth level is so far behind. And I'm so excited that we, that Mr. Holbrook and Mrs. Blevins brought this to us, and we're on the front end of it, and we, our kids aren't behind, they're growing, and that's just awesome, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Same thing, you know, appreciate, you know, all you guys are doing and to have the opportunity to, you know, interact with students and be in the building is really great because you do have a very unique building with the students and the population that's there, and so definitely thank you for that and just continue to grow the kids and give them opportunities to be their first of, which is pretty cool, you have that experience with the kids. But most importantly, which apples won, the red, the green, or the yellow? I was so curious about that.
I think it was the green, they like the sour ones.
Okay. They like the sour stuff and the hot stuff. Yeah, 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 I figured that. Figured that, but yes, definitely thank you guys for doing such a great job with our kids and just bringing that unique experience and that first up has propelled those kids to experience those. that unique experience and that first up has propelled those kids to experience those things or sometimes far and few between. And school is that first, you know, that opportunity for them to be able to do that. So definitely continue to keep up that good work, which I know you guys will, so we appreciate it.
And I actually just did all of these comments, but I said a long time ago, when this was presented, I said, this is a game changer, and it's proving out to be. And what a great use of those funds to make sure that our kids are getting ahead and moving forward. And that's what, that's what it's all about. So thank you.
I want to compliment both Mr. Hopkins and Mrs. Ernst on leading during very difficult times and all of our building administrators. And we all are dealing with significant challenges. I also want to compliment Ms. Layton and Ms. Barnwell. I don't know if I could have got up and did that presentation being a second-year teacher in front of the board, knowing that it's live streamed in front of probably thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of fans. But we are so excited about some of the results that we're starting to see with our co-teaching model. Any organization, we always say, is only as strong as its people. And we chose to take those dollars that we received and invest it in people and invest it, not in things, but in people in our classrooms. And I think that's going to make a huge difference over the next 24 to 36 months. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to give a massive thank you to the Crawford staff. I told our co-teachers the first day that we brought them all together that we were doing something historic, and whether it's co-teaching or finding ways to keep the community involved, Crawford is showing what history is being made here in Hamilton. So I just appreciate you guys being here. You guys make me look good. I like that. So thank you so much, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our final school to showcase this evening is Fairwood Elementary. We have our principal, Mrs. Jennifer Wolfe, and Mrs. Adrienne Shear, who are here to talk about Fairwood.
No pressure now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for having us. No pressure, we're the last presentation. And then thousands of people watching.
Tens of thousands.
So thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Wolfe, I'm the principal at Fairwood Elementary.
I'm Adrienne Shear, the assistant. We are pleased to be here to give you a window into Fairwood.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about our journey. Adrienne and I started two years ago, so we are in our second year together at Fairwood. When we sat down and we talked, our two big ideas that we really needed to focus on were building trust and also building a shared vision. Trust to create that sense of efficacy within our teachers and also to empower our staff. Once we knew we had that, that's when we moved to the creation of our shared vision. Really, your shared vision becomes a critical component of your culture. And when I think about culture in a school, culture really is everything. It's one of the biggest factors, I think, that can often be overlooked, and it really has a direct correlation with student achievement. It's what Adrienne would describe, Adrienne and I would describe is it's the heart and soul of our school. With a positive culture, you're going to encourage students, you're going to encourage staff, you're going to encourage families to engage. If you don't have that, you can get the opposite, that disengagement. And the engagement from all three of those core people and core groups is critical.
Culture, each strategy for lunch. You can have the best ideas, you can have the best little strategies laid out, but if you don't have those trusting relationships and that cultural foundation, it's not happening.
So in order for us to solidify our culture, it was important for us first to create that shared vision. We're going to talk to you through this presentation on how we did that, and Adrienne will get more specific into that. But our BLT, and I'm very proud of our BLT, our BLT worked over a three-day period this past summer to create a blueprint of our values, our behaviors, and our expected outcomes. You'll hear us reference that as our VBO, so I'm not going to keep saying that, I'll say our VBO. It was not enough for us to just say what we value. If we truly want to establish a positive culture, we have to define our everyday behaviors, and we have to act on what those behaviors are. I always tell staff, and Adrienne and I have had a lot of discussion about this, culture is created every 30 seconds. It's how you, it's how you say things, it's how you treat people, it's how you act. I always also say, you know, culture can be created intentionally by what you do or unintentionally, by what you do and sometimes what you don't do. So we want to get ahead of that, and we want to be very intentional with everything that we do. So a little overview of the process. In order to create this VBO, we first started with data. We collected data, we formed our team, we decided on our process, which we decided to be this three-day retreat over last summer. And then the result of that was our final product. We were able to come up with our VBO and say, this is what, if you are a staff member at Fairwood, this is what you live by. And all of you should have a copy of that, so I hope that you can kind of page through and check that out. But we're pretty proud of that. First, just talking about the data. This gave us a huge indication of trust in our school. So what we did was we surveyed our entire staff. They answered a variety of questions on a one to five scale, one being strongly disagree to five being strongly agree. And these questions were regarding trust around colleague-to-colleague interactions and also colleague-to-administrative interactions. Next, we formed our team. I did mention this before, these were our BLT members, and we also had some people outside of our BLT that became part of this team because it was really important for us to include everybody. I do want to shout out the specific members of our team by reading their names because the work that they did through this three-day retreat was amazing, and it was hard work. So I do want to shout out some of our teachers and staff, Brandy Talby, Sarah Turner, Erin Nissis, Rachel Bridgeford, Sherry Beechon, Sandy Marin, Megan Bailey, Ashley Hansen, Jackie Kiesbey, Alison Getler, Michelle Connerman, Nikki Jaleel, Holly Mayer, and Adrienne Shear.
And Jen Wolfe. Basically, we started out our three-day retreat with team building. We have a team of people, but we wanted to go a little deeper. We went in and got into our favorite memories of Fairwood. And I can tell you through the storytelling, we had a lot of laughs and tears. It was, it was a good team bonding experience. Then we kind of moved into our purpose. What is our purpose? Why is Fairwood here? What are we doing? How does Fairwood support the larger vision? We moved into our ideal school and basically talked about what would it look like? What would you see? What would you hear? What would you feel? What would you think? Then we moved into data reflection. We came back to that Trust in School survey, kind of took a deeper dive into where are we? What do we need to focus on first? Where do we need to start our work? This is the part that took the longest, and that is the consensus activities. That was the bulk of the two and a half days. We did the same iteration over and over again. We put our team into two people, they would write down their ideas, they would join up with two more people, have four people discuss ideas, get up, take a gallery walk, go look at everybody's ideas, have time for people to ask clarifying questions, share their information. Then we would get everybody to vote. You have three votes, pick the top three out of all of these. We took our top three votes, put that together. We used the same process for our values. Then we did the same thing for our behaviors, and we did the same thing for our outcomes. Everyone voted every time for their top three ideas that they thought would have the greatest potential impact on student learning. We had volunteers, thankfully, at the end. It can get a little tedious. We had wordsmithers and people who would get us over that hump when we got hung up on ideas, but they helped us through, so that was good. Our final product is what you have in your packet. BLT presented this whole process, just like I shared it with you, shared it with the staff. We took a consensus vote with the entire staff. We obviously reached consensus for this, so we were happy with that. And this is kind of what we're all holding each other accountable for. When we send out our weekly reports or whatever, it's about focusing on this week, are you always growing? Are you focused on this piece? Are you working on your relationships? Are you being inclusive? It's kind of our thread, common thread.
So at the end of this process, Adrienne and I wanted to be sure that we, as the leaders of the building, set up structures within each school day that supported our values. Because you can always tell what somebody values by where they spend their time, where they spend their money. In this case, we wanted to show what we valued to our staff through this by where we spent our time. One of these graphics up here represents something that we started this year that we're really proud of. These are data chats. Adrienne and I sat down and we restructured our whole master schedule in a way that would allow us to meet with a team or a grade level every day for 30 minutes. And that has been huge in living out our value of we are always growing and we are relationship-centered. I think back to our very first data chat, and I remember what we did. We took our schedules, we met with every grade level team. All of the teachers make their own schedule for the kids every day. So we set all of those out, we did a gallery walk, we looked at instructional minutes, we looked where people were spending their time, and we had a huge collaborative discussion about how to best meet the instructional needs of our students and pool the best things out of each schedule. It was amazing. And I truly believe we have set up some of the best schedules at each grade level than that we have ever done. So that was really important. If you look up there, there's a pineapple. I don't know if you know, the symbol of a pineapple is actually a symbol of welcoming, universal sign of welcoming. And now I'm going to take the time again to shout out our teachers, and I truly believe we have some of the best teachers at Fairwood in this entire district. That being said, what we've done with this pineapple is we had so many teachers asking us, can I observe this colleague? Can I observe this colleague? Absolutely, falls right within our values. So when you walk around Fairwood, you will see these pineapples in the door. That tells the observer, come on in, my door is open, because we don't want to interrupt instruction. And, you know, we don't want people feeling like they're stepping on toes. So you will see these all around, and our educators are going in and watching each other teach because really, you never steal a bad idea. So we're really proud of our teachers for that.
The coffee cup with the Fairwood Falcon on the left was part of a bookmark with the QR code on the bottom, and that was an invitation to our teachers to join the coaching cohort. And basically, coaching cohort is a year-long commitment from teachers, voluntary commitment for one classroom experience, whether it's observing or co-teaching or getting feedback, and one planning experience a week. So it's a big commitment. And when we started it, I thought, if we get three people to sign up, this is going to be great. We just took coaching and the coaching cycles that the coaches can offer and put a bow on it. Here. I am proud to say we had over 25 teachers, veterans and newbies, sign up for our coaching cohort. The other thing we really took a big focus on is that bottom-right tweet, Breakfast Club. We wanted to create a space where our newbies, because they come in with fresh and popping ideas, we wanted to create a space where our newbies could get in with our veterans, teachers who have the wisdom to help mold those ideas, play off the strengths of each group, and share. Share ideas, share thoughts, share books, share classroom management strategies. Basically, we planned the very first one, and it was basically an article about find your marigold, find your person who will help protect you and build you up when you need it. Every meeting since then, we have used their feedback to plan the next meeting, being responsive to what the teachers are telling us they would like more information or more work around or with. We're trying to build that efficacy because believing in what you do is the thing that makes the difference. So we're trying to build that teacher efficacy, which comes right into this tier-one instruction and the MTSS process. Heavy focus on data this year. We know with the learning loss, we've had, we have a second grader who came in, not one, we had a few second graders who came in this year and didn't remember all their letters and sounds. That's a kindergarten skill. But we've had a big focus, especially in our data chats, we've been able to hit on layering instruction. You can still teach those letters and sounds, those requisite skills, while coming back in to teach your second-grade standards. You can still hit everything, it's just got to be layered. So we make a joke, we got a lot of layers on our cake this year.
And I want to add to that, just to kind of reiterate, I think what I'm hearing throughout the night is co-teaching has been a huge part of that. And I don't, I want to thank you for that. That has just transformed Fairwood in so many ways. So I definitely wanted to say that.
Yes, acceleration of learning has been amazing. And this little gal right here, she was our first positive office referral this year. And our PBIS approach basically took a whole shift on it, set a goal around what we wanted it to be. When we walked in the year before, there were 800 office referrals. We are currently on track to meet 150 or less office referrals by doing stuff like this. So this is Ms. Kyrie. Kyrie has a special place in my heart, not only because she was our first office referral, but once upon a time, 20-ish years ago, in Middletown, I was a manager of the city pool. And I had this little girl and her brother who showed up every single day. I mean, they were on my hip. It's fine, rainy days, they're there. We're cleaning bathrooms, they're there. And I don't know how many of you have been in a public restroom at a public pool, but it's not pretty. And they would be there just hanging out, helping clean and do whatever. So we show up to Open House last year, we're greeting parents and that, and I hear from across the way, Adrienne? And this woman comes off and gives me a big hug, and it's her, one of her mamas. So full circle, this life, this profession, is about the relationships you make and how you build this culture, that culture, 30 seconds at a time. We're doing our best. We want to thank our Fairwood family, we want to thank you all. We appreciate all the work that everybody's putting into making all of this possible.
Wow. Jennifer, that, what you're doing over there is phenomenal. And this is your two? Whoa.
We came in in the COVID year.
Well, we had to do something with it. But to see you growing as an administrator, I mean, it wasn't that long ago, was it, Ms. Colwalk? She was a counselor, right?
Student families.
Yeah.
Working with you.
Working with me and solving major cases, if I remember right, but that's another story. But seeing you grow, taking those skills as an administrator, those skills that you embodied at that time in that role, and bringing them over here to create the climate for your school, the culture for your school, what you're doing is just wonderful. I just can't thank you enough for all that work. And it's obviously translating into academic growth, it's translating into behavioral growth, positive behavior growth. When you, you're cutting all those office referrals, and as we talked earlier about the suspensions being cut at Bridgeport, so those kids are in class, that's incredible.
It's pretty awesome.
Just thank you both, and involving the staff. And that has to translate into what you're doing with kids. And I'm just excited for you. I'm excited for what you're doing and the results you're getting from your staff. That's, that's, that's great. Thank you for sharing all this.
Great job.
Yes, I want to thank you as well. One thing, I mean, you guys do an excellent job over there. One theme I've heard tonight is, a couple of themes really, one is each one of these, each one of the administrative principals thinks their group is the best. All right? That's good. That's good because, you know, that's a good leader. And no matter how you're doing what you're doing, everybody has the same goal, is to move that child up and forward. And each one, each school's unique in how they got to get it done. And what you're trying, if it's working, you got to run with it. So, and I want to thank every, you know, all three sets of principals and assistant principals here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, Adrian. I first can remember back when you were still at River View as an assistant principal, and I called you in and I said, you really want to take this principal job? It's March of 2020, April of 2020, right, right when COVID starts. And Jen, yeah? And Jen, yeah. Yeah, I want to do it.
I'll take it.
And then a month later, Adrian comes along, and we're hiring her after almost 20 years in Middletown, and that's a huge transition in a normal year, coming in. I went and visited the building in October, and I remember sitting down in your office, and I said, how are things going? Oh my gosh. It was a struggle. And from that point to now, where you have gotten, and where you have been able to transform that building, and that has just been eye-opening. And both of you deserve an awful lot of credit for your leadership during this, and, you know, going through a time in which neither one of you really had experience in the positions we were putting you in. So you were learning during probably a time that's completely unprecedented, you know, none of us could give you a ton of guidance on how to hand away pandemic. We were all learning that together. And you coupled with the fact that you're now learning a brand-new job, and, and learning something about yourselves as leaders, and, and understanding the staff, and understanding all of those dynamics. What a tough situation to be in, but wow, look at where you are now. I could not be prouder of the two of you and the leadership that you provided at Fairwood, and look forward to fantastic things as we go forward. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen and Adrian. I pull a different building every day of map data as it's coming in, and I try to highlight teachers. And they were a little modest today, but I will tell you, I was firing off emails left and right to their teachers, because the growth is phenomenal. I want to thank these guys, I want to thank our entire team. I can't wait for you to see what the other five buildings are doing. This work is tough, but these people and our teachers make it worth it. So, thank you for all you guys are doing, and thanks for letting me showcase them tonight.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blevins, thank you for taking this project on, and this co-teaching. It's amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, we move into public participation. And just as I usually do at these meetings, just remind everyone that per policy, public participation is limited to three minutes per individual, 30 minutes total time during the meeting. No, participant may speak more than once on the same topic, and all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Presiding officer may prohibit public comments that are frivolous, repetitive, and/or harassing. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, antagonistic, or obscene. I may request any individual leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum or is disruptive to the conduct of the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Stargell. And just remind us, say, state your name and your address, please. You can move it down.
I don't need it.
Okay.
Everybody can hear me. My name's Tanya Stargell, I live on 401 Ross Avenue. I just want to say first, I appreciate that my kids still remain unmasked right now. I appreciate it. Ms. Blevins said, last time I spoke to her, that we have heard you. And I appreciate that. So thank you very much. I, we do appreciate that, my kids appreciate that. So, and I also want to say that we thought too, hearing like from all of my kids, that remote learning, that they had to do a couple weeks ago, or last week, or whatever it was, that it actually went well. That they actually felt like this is different from how remote learning was last time we did it. So I feel like it's been an improvement. So I'm not sure what was different about that, because I hear different things from all of my kids. But they did feel like this remote learning time was different than it was before, and they actually felt like they were learning during this time. So I do appreciate that, I felt like that was a really good, a good thing. So, you guys' elementary schools are awesome, like that, those are incredible. I can't wait to hear about Brookwoods, and if they're going to do that, that would be great. I do wonder, like Ms. Colwell said, BC, like before COVID, is there an end game? Like, is there an off-ramp? Do we see it, like, shifting? Or is there, I'm praying that there's an AC at some point, that we can say, like, we don't have to do this anymore, like, we can go back to living normally. I don't have anything else, I just want to say those couple things, but I do appreciate that my kids are unmasked, they appreciate that freedom, and that we have given them freedom to make that choice for our own kids and for our families. And appreciate all the teachers that made remote learning successful when we had to do that. So, it's not ideal, but they made it work, so I'm glad that that happened.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holbrook.
Yes, Mr. Sprague and members of the Board of Education. I first want to start my comments tonight by stating that I truly believe that there is no substitute for in-person learning. On January 12th, we had to make the difficult decision to take a few days and to go to a remote learning model, and that was primarily due to a significant number of staff illnesses throughout the district. As you just heard, I do believe that we've learned some really, really valuable lessons with regards to remote learning over the last year. Is it perfect? No. Is it better than when we started in March of 2020? It absolutely is. Is it our best means of instruction? It is not. In-person learning is our best means of instruction, and always will be. And so we're always balancing, can we cover our buildings and our classrooms with that? And that was the reason that we had to do that. And I want to thank, our parents stepped up, our students were engaged, our teachers were prepared, our instructional assistants were great out there assisting our teachers and kids. Our clerical staff handled a lot of things at the building level during those days. Our media center specialists and clerks, you know, continued to assist and provide instruction. We were able to take our food service and feed kids during those periods of time. Our maintenance and custodial staffs took additional time to help clean our buildings. And even the assistance of our transportation staff. Our building administrators and our district central office also worked tirelessly during that time to make sure that when we did come back, that we were able to do that. We still aren't back to full capacity. And I do look forward to the time when things get back to, I don't know what normal is, but I do know that we are edging ever so closely back to some of those things. We still have to move some large events to later in February or early in March, and we hope that those postponements will be just that, postponements and not cancellations. The other thing that I want to mention is that during the month of January, we usually put out some information on inclement weather. Over the next probably six weeks, we may run the risk of doing that. If we make a decision, we try to make that as early as possible. It's not always possible to do that the night before. We certainly understand the impact that has on childcare, on families, that, that's a tremendous impact, and trying to do that as early as possible. And when we do communicate that, we do it in a variety of forums. We'll, we'll do it on our social media and websites and all of those things, but not everybody has access to that. We also put it out there on radio and television stations. WMOH usually is one of the first to pick it up. Major TV stations also have that. But the other thing we do is a school messenger piece, where we send that out to a text and phone call to all of our parents as well. And that usually takes a couple hours to circulate all of that through. But I think it's important for our community to hear that we, we will make those decisions as early as possible, you know, and if it's an early morning situation, we have people out driving the roads, checking those out at three and four o'clock in the morning, because our freshman building starts quite early, and our bus drivers leave around six o'clock in the morning to start those routes, so we have to make that decision before that. But ultimately, you know, we want our kids in school when possible, but we're not going to sacrifice safety to do that. Finally, I'm going to turn this over for a moment to Mr. Wright, our appointed COVID czar. And he's going to talk a little bit about some information that's actually encouraging that we received yesterday from the Ohio Department of Health, and we're still trying to interpret exactly what all of this means. So, Mr. Wright, I'm going to turn this over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holbrook. So we did receive notice yesterday from, from the Ohio Department of Health, from Dr. Bruce Vanderhoff, which is, is a change again to how we're handling this whole COVID situation. One of the things that, that we have been tasked with in the schools is, when we have these positive cases, and everyone knows with the Omicron recently, it's been, it's been highly contagious, there's just an immense amount of contact tracing that has been, that has been required of our nurses, of our administrators, of our teachers, of our schools. So this information that we received late yesterday afternoon, evening, is talking about how the schools will be contact tracing or be looking at exposures based on outbreaks or clusters moving forward. So what we, what we believe this is going to do is potentially minimize the amount of contact tracing we're going to have to do within the schools. I was on a call today with other Butler County superintendents and officials. Unfortunately, the Hamilton Health Commissioner was in the vaccination clinic today, so she was unable to attend. But what we are going to do is obviously, there's a few questions that we do need to get answered, based on this most recent guidance. So as soon as we get those questions answered, we will be probably putting out some updated guidance to our schools, to our administrators, to our parents, to our families, and to our community, about what this is going to mean kind of moving forward, as we go down this path of continuing to try to, you know, mitigate this, this COVID-19 spread.
And one of the things I do believe that this is doing is setting this up for the future, and the fact that, you know what, there's going to be another variant. We've got to still be able to function as, not only a district, but as a society, and manage what this is. And, and so, it's got to be manageable. I will tell you, our nurses, God bless them, they all haven't waved the white flag at this point, they certainly have thought about it. They have done such an incredible job, not only last year, but this year, with everything that has fallen on them. And we're managing this the best we can, but, but we would love for our school nurses to get back to actually doing what they were hired to do every day, and not spend a vast majority of their day contact tracing, which is what they have been doing.
And I know Mr. Holbrook put a shout-out to them the last time we were in, in public session, but I work directly with them and hear them, and, you know, honestly, when we, when we did decide to shut down there for a couple days and go remote, I do think that we had some that were at a point of outbreak. And it was, you know, we were, just to give you an example, at one day, we had 18 positive cases at the high school alone of students. So if you take those 18 positive cases, times seven classes a day for each individual kid, and going around and looking at seating charts in every single one of those classrooms, you're talking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of phone calls, notifications, you know, that contact tracing became, I mean, it became almost endless, and, and they were doing it basically from the time they arrived until the time they left. So, we do hope that as we continue to get guidance, we're going to be able to continue to obviously follow that guidance, and assist with the, the health department and what they need as far as information. But, you know, I do hope that as I'm reading this document, it's going to give us some relief as we head into the future.
Very good. I'm sure the nurses will appreciate that very much.
They will much appreciate it.
I think everybody will.
I think everybody will, yes.
Mr. Holbrook, if I may, if everybody recalls, you know, March, I think it was roughly March 13th, 2020, when the students left that day, that was it. I mean, we really had very little notification that this was going to happen, and it'd never happened before. So, everybody was kind of floundering at first, but we went, we got through it, and we weren't even sure how the next school year was going to start. We all went through video, whatever you call that thing.
Zoom.
Zoom, yes. Okay, you can see I'm very into this stuff.
Easily they forget.
Yes, uh-huh. But, you know, in our Zoom meetings, I mean, we, we weren't sure that we were actually going to be able to start the next school year, until almost, I think, late July, that we were going to be able to get back into the school year. So, now, we kind of have an idea of what to prepare for, but back then, I mean, and I want to, again, you and your staff, because you've got everything together, I mean, you start making sure that we had our buses taking food out to children. So it's, it's, it's been a challenge, and I think you and your, and your staff, and your teachers, and everybody have, have held up very well to this.
Well, I can tell you, I can recall that day quite well. I remember getting everyone together, and I looked at all of them, and I said, you know, this is really going to test our leadership team. It, it's not real hard to lead when you come in and you already have a blueprint of what to do, and you have to follow it. There was no blueprint. There was no precedent, there was no protocol. We had to develop all of that ourselves. And, you know, I often look back and wonder if we've made the correct decisions going through everything. I know all the decisions were, were based off information we had at the time, and weighing in a number of different decisions. And hindsight's always 20/20. There's probably some things we could have done better, there's probably some things that we did quite well. But, but I do think that the one thing that is evident is that people stepped up in this district and they led. Our, our transportation department, our food service folks, our building administrators, our, our teachers, you know, they stepped up and they became leaders, and they, they led. And that, that, that says a lot about this district and the capacity we have, you know, as a district. And, and this board led. We made some really difficult decisions, and we don't know what the right or wrong decision is. We're making decisions based off the information we have at that moment. That, that was the lens that we were looking through. And I appreciate everybody, the entire community, the board, our staff, the support that we've gotten. You know, it has not been an easy time to be in education. I'm finishing my 31st year, and in 31 years, I don't know if I've ever lived through 18 months that have been more challenging than, than the 18 months that we've gone through. And we'll look back and appreciate that, and we'll look back and say, my goodness, that was really difficult. Some of us will write a, an interesting book or something like that as well. But, but, you know, I couldn't be proud to be around the leaders and the leadership that, that, you know, I'm just very fortunate to be a part of every day. And I, I think the five of you for giving us the latitude to go out and pursue and hire outstanding leaders and allow us to lead and do our jobs. Thank you.
And it's like Mr. Wright just gave us another direction from the, you know, state, and it was constant, I mean, it's constantly changing what they're wanting each time for something.
Well, I may have something when we leave here tonight, I don't know.
Yes. But thank you so much.
I'm still trying to figure out what a cluster is.
Well, there's probably a lot of answers for that.
Continuing on. Board members in front of you, you have a consent agenda for tonight. I'd like to have a motion to approve it. To adopt it?
So moved.
So moved.
I second.
Second. Pastor Schach, any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isbell.
Yes.
I want to make a comment before moving on.
Sure.
On the human resources agenda, we did have the retirement, or re-retirement of Mary Ann Hazlitt at Brookwood. She, she did this district a huge favor, coming out of retirement and servicing Brookwood for this year, and, you know, did a tremendous job, once again, leading in difficult circumstances. You know, it was very challenging to go through interview processes during COVID in that last year, and she stepped up. You know, I called her in my office, she did this district, myself, a personal favor by coming back this year, and I want to personally thank her for, for her service this year.
Yes, definitely. It's very much appreciated. Mr. Hancock.
Mr. President, I have a few items for you tonight. First item on the treasurer's agenda is a request to approve the acceptance of tax advances, an annual resolution we do. And why do we do that? Because we like that. Because we like that money in our account just as fast as we can get it there. And so those come in about three payments. You'll get two advances over the next few weeks here, and then there'll be a final payment late in March. There's a few confirming purchase requisitions and the financial reports for the month of December. Halfway through the fiscal year, we'd anticipated 47.8 million, and we received 47.8 million, 9,181 different than what we thought. I know no real major differences on any of the line items that would concern us at this point. On the expenditure side, 47.9, almost 47.9. We actually spent 48.6, about 7,500 more than planned at this point. I'm not overly concerned at those numbers at this point. The fringe benefit number is about 350,000 higher than planned. But there's a $250,000 payment for workers' comp that hit in the month of February, and we weren't really trying to predict ebbs and flows on the monthly. We just did some straight-line estimation, so we'll be fine there. And so that's where we're at, we're continuing to track well within what we'd anticipate.
Kind of a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes, thank you.
Our next meeting will be on February 10th, beginning at 4:00. This will be an executive session only, there will be no open session that evening. So kind of a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are so adjourned, thank you.